On January fourteenth.
Yes, Don.
Don's here. Anyone have any comments to page one, lines one through forty-five?
I didn't see any.
Page two, lines forty-six through fifty-nine?
I didn't see anything there either.
All right, hearing no comments, I make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
All those in favor of approving the January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. So, general commission business, we have an eight twenty-four referral from the Board of Selectmen for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget capital projects.
It just blacked out, let me hang on a second. So, this is, we do this every year, or we should do it every year. What you have in front of you in the packet is the eight, an eight twenty-four referral for the budget, the capital items in the town manager and Board of Selectmen budget, which is being talked about in front of Board of Finance right now. But these are items that require an eight twenty-four review under the statute. We tend to do them in bulk or in mass. So, I don't know how you want to do this, I'm happy to go through them one at a time, but if you, you, I've got it up on the screen, which is, I think there are nine items, so two are specifically Board of Education items, there's a series of Public Works improvements, and then an item that is specifically carved out for the Water Sewer Authority. Tell me how, so what you have in the dropbox is you have, you have a summary description sheet, and then you have essentially, I think, two charts, one is a cost chart, and then you've got a funding chart. So, the cost chart tells how much it is and why, and then the funding chart shows where it's coming from, either at a bonding capacity, or general fund revenue, or capital cost. Or, you know, capital cost non-recurring, if we call the CNR section, so.
Some of what I read, some of this is, you know, they're doing like sidewalks, and they're doing X amount, or they're doing.
So, I mean, I know a little bit about, about all of these. The district paving is from the Board of Ed, that's paving for a series of, you know, all of their properties. Security improvements essentially includes a lot of cameras. It's from the Board of Ed. Eno, so we'll just go through them, so Eno Hall, then we can go to the specific sheets if you want to. Eno Hall entrance improvements, so this is a, this is a, this has been funded since FY twenty-three, and I think it's been back once or twice for supplemental funding due to costs and design costs. There's, there's a plan to redo the parking lot. There are challenges with the stairs over there, and ADA accessibility, and kind of, you know, direct pathways into the building from each level. So, that is part of what that improvement is. We, I understand that there has been a lot of concern, particularly because it is location for, you know, it's a, it's a community center, also acts, you know, for folks that may have some disabilities and those kinds of things, so that's, that's the purpose of it, it's a supplemental request.
Can I ask you a quick, because when I read that, I was like, well, what prevented them from doing it in fiscal year twenty-three? Like, did they start doing it, and then things came up that they saw and they didn't have enough money, you know what I mean? Because that's three fiscal years.
So, that, that is some of it, I think there's some prioritization that goes around too, and, you know, it took a little while to design as well.
Okay.
Some of that design took.
Took longer.
Twenty-three to twenty-four, and then you're in twenty-five, so.
And then costs go up, yeah, okay.
Two Farms Village, if, if, was funded in FY twenty-five for purchase. So, the town purchased Two Farms Village for, it's going to be used for the Board of Education as a special needs facility. This money is for post-closing renovations, so after the town takes, takes ownership of it, they're asking for that. I don't know why the Tariff Greenway money isn't there, let me go to that. Tariff Greenway connection is, the East Coast Greenway, you know, is a, is a multi-multi-multi-million dollar project. This is, this is for some gaps, and for, designed for those gaps, so it's not, I don't think it's for construction funding, and I'll go to it in a second.
I had a question about that, I'm sorry.
Maybe I'll just go right to it now.
There was something that, I'm trying to find it now, on here, on funding, something about some savings, and.
Yeah, two thousand twenty-six project savings, it's on that line.
Oh, there it is.
Does it show that on the, does it show it on the original line?
Yeah, ninety thousand dollars it showed.
I think it's further out, right, it's further out in the.
Oh, it's found out. Oh, here it is, it's on page sixteen, seventeen?
Yeah, it's on eighteen-two, it says project.
Tell me what page you're on. Then go to eighteen?
Eighteen?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there it is, eighteen, project savings and grant. So, how did? I was just curious how that happened.
Tell me where it says that.
Oh, it's on page, I'm sorry, it's on page eighteen at the, at the top, at the bottom?
Bottom of eighteen.
At the bottom of eighteen, in, in the chart, in the little chart.
Yes, I probably don't know the answer.
It's the next page, you're very close, you're almost there.
Okay, it's showing funding sources here, okay.
And then you just keep on going up a little bit.
The, the right, down the.
Yeah, I got it, I got it now. I, I don't know, I don't, I don't have an explanation for that, I'm not exactly sure. I, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's for design, for that project.
Oh, it's a twenty percent state funding, if you look at the narrative on page sixteen.
Oh, okay.
Twenty percent, they're calling it savings, it's just coming from the state, it looks like.
Maybe it was some money used for something else, yeah.
No, I think that, you know, there's, there's, well, there's hopefully federal dollars coming, I think they may be revaluing that, but.
So, we said it's, the construction phase is eligible for eighty percent federal funding and twenty percent state funding, so that will not come out of our budget?
No, well, we pay for design. Yeah, so we believe, I think the hope is that it is a fully funded project. It is a state priority to connect these, these trail systems as, you know, and it has been a federal priority.
And it's a household priority where I live.
Yeah, great.
The truck, they were going to get a bike truck.
So, I was going to just comment on the sidewalks, so the sidewalk, sidewalks are similar to how the, the Public Works deals with pavement management. They kind of have a replacement system, and they, you know, they make a list and, and get reports, and they, and they kind of prioritize, we're going to fix these sidewalks this year, we're going to do this paving this year. So, that's, that happens every year, that is a line on that literally is, is in every budget every year.
Right.
That's separate from the Fire Town project?
It is separate from the Fire Town project, that's a good question, there's a Fire Town Road sidewalk project that is, that is funded, that was funded in FY twenty-four, twenty-five, that they're working on right-of-way negotiations, and, at the golf club, and et cetera. Public Works has, has, has a truck replacement in Plow, I, I know that's included here, I'm not exactly sure it requires an eight twenty-four review, typically, you know, it's, public improvement to, to real property, but, but they sent it to us this way, so, we just deal with it. And then, essentially, a, what they call a septic receiving station at WPCA, which takes their private septic releases from private companies, charges a fee, and then, you know, puts them into our.
More treatment.
Treatment system, yeah, exactly.
I had a, one last question on, just, a question, on page three, there's all the sources of funding, and I just saw something called the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund, and it's out there for a few years now, in the future. Is that from revenue from the operations?
So, we share with the operations at Simsbury Farms, yeah, so that, 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 that.
So, there's some money.
That money, as I understand, doesn't, doesn't go back, I mean, they, they place it in its special revenue fund for use for the golf course, or the pool, or the skating rink.
How come it's only in FY twenty-eight, thirty, and thirty-one, but not twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine?
I don't think there's any forecasted projects until twenty-eight.
Oh, okay.
That may be.
Okay, thank you.
If you look up a little bit on page two, under Community Services, all the Simsbury Farms items are, start in twenty-eight.
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, remember, so this is a, this is a, this is the six-year plan, even though, you know, nothing is technically funded, but they, you know, we're requesting to do that.
Obviously, the things that have already their own funding catch my eye.
So, I, these kinds of investments are almost always consistent with our P O C D, which talks about improving and sustaining community facilities. I do have to draft a motion in here.
I make a motion to make the motion?
Do you want to read it? Do you want to read the motion, Holly?
Yeah, I've got to find it first, is it at the beginning, or is it?
Yeah, it's on page two.
Yep.
Oh, it's on page two, okay.
Yeah, go back up.
I thought it was at the end.
There you go.
So, moved, the Planning Commission finds that the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six capital projects, as described in the staff memorandum dated March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, are consistent with the plan of conservation and development, which seeks to provide community facilities to meet the community needs and desires as effectively and efficiently as possible. Goals one point one and one point, I mean, eleven point one and eleven point two, on page one twelve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Great, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the eight twenty-four referral for the Board of Selectmen on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget capital projects, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Memorial Pool redesigned? I thought the pool was closing.
Well, I, I think that's. I think it, I think there, I think, yes, but I think there's an introduction of other items associated with the closing, yeah, yeah, exactly. Which I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what that is. Okay, so.
The implementation process?
Yes, so we, we, if you remember when we did the P O C D, one of, you know, one of the first recommendations was to impaddle a Plan Implementation Committee, which we've done and has met a couple of times. And as part of that is to provide a report, whether formal or, or informal, on, on progress of the dozens and dozens and dozens of, of items, what do you need?
It, it wouldn't open on my computer, and it won't open here either.
You just have to edit other, other programs and use Excel.
Say that again?
Use another program.
Yeah.
I don't know, I couldn't open it on my computer.
How do you say, how do you use the other program?
When it pops up, it says, it's got like a little button that says use other programs, and you just click that.
Open with?
I did.
There you go.
Oh, okay, I didn't want, okay. You've got, yeah, that's, I know, that's why I don't.
It's asking me to install, well, you know what, you've got it right in front of you.
Yeah, okay, perfect, yeah.
That's why I made the.
It didn't give the, it didn't give me that option.
You know, I didn't even think, I should have put it in a PDF, and I apologize for that, it wasn't, but you, we could use the, so. So, on an annual basis, we try to update you on, on, on the progress that zoning commission has made, and the other, the other assigned partners. And we have done that, Bill and Aaron participated in a review of this last month with the Plan Implementation Committee. So, not much has changed, except for kind of the zoning, zoning implementation of, of the housing thing, of the four housing strategies, which have all been adopted. So, I'll, I'll kind of go down, the way, the way it works again, I don't need to go through everything for you unless you want me to, but what you'll see is, we're really focusing on the red boxes and the red font, you remember, the, the items in black font are kind of aspirational and ongoing, and they, they use kind of the more passive words like encourage, support, continue, those kinds of things, so. There's really no way to measure that stuff, the red stuff is all stuff we can measure. Did we, did we do it, or did we not do it, was it completed, or was it not completed? And so, what, what I tried to do is, is I've inserted a nice black mark to show the task is either done, or in progress, or started, and I try to, I try to use just a little language in, under target dates, either partial and ongoing, or in progress, something like that, so I think it does help us kind of gauge what we're doing, we've never done this before, but it is, is a nice way to show, are we making progress, or are we not making progress? And again, hopefully, that's, the, the purpose of the Plan Implementation Committee is to, is to have those kind of conversations, hey, are you guys going to start working on this, or is it not important, or, and that way, when, 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 when Bill and Aaron are in that committee, they, they can begin to gauge how folks are operating, we haven't really gotten into that, we kind of got through the first year, and.
Yeah.
But, but, but that's really what the use of those meetings should be, kind of on a quarterly basis, you know, would be to have those conversations.
So, Aaron, Bill, and George, I, I feel remiss insofar as I was supposed to report on the progress that the Sustainability Committee has made, but I missed the meetings, or announcements, or any of that sort of thing, so I, on page twelve, they're doing more than.
I think I reached out to Mark, actually, and I don't, I don't know whether Mark responded to me, I, just so you know.
Probably thought I was doing it, you know.
Pretty much, I did.
I, I did tell him I would be the liaison, but then I missed the.
Yeah, so, we, we can start right there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that, now.
He's leaving, right, Holly? Is he stepping down?
Wow, that's news to me.
No, okay, no, I'm, no, I'm not, I just.
Well, I missed the last meeting, I was out of town.
I could be wrong.
Better, better read the notes, then.
Or he's not doing, I don't know.
I understand, that, that may be the case.
Oh, okay, that's, okay.
He may be stepping down.
That's, yeah.
Oh, wow, he's really a powerhouse.
He's pursuing some development, just so.
I mean, it's, he's really been a force for action over there, he's really the guy who's done it, so. So, I need to get back to you on the first one, report to the Public Energy Usage. I know we've had discussions, but to the extent that, that has made progress in being able to do those sorts of things, I mean, there's, it's a two-way street, you've got to be able to work with various people at the town that are, are able to do that. But as you, the next one is ongoing, because there's sustainability fairs, we're starting to hold. We also do outreaches at, you know, usually that Halloween festival, Spooktacular, so there's been, conduct regular campaigns, we do that. And also, there is a newsletter that has been focusing quite a bit every month, it comes out, on waste, and we've been tackling food waste, so that bullet educate the community about diverting materials from the waste stream, that's definitely ongoing. And we do participate in the Sustainable C T program, we would like to achieve a silver level again. That's a hill for climbers, basically, that's a question of bandwidth. So, we talk about how to do it, but if, you know, if they really want people to do this, they really need to streamline.
It would require a full commitment from the town of Simsbury across the board, and not just the Sustainability Committee.
Right.
Achieving those points, I was involved in that process in Vernon, and it's like a full-time job to collect the points, and do the math, and.
And here's the shame, we do most of it, we do qualify, we've gone over it, over and over, but I don't know if you guys remember when Rich, Rich did it, oh, it is a full-time job. The documentation.
It really takes a lot.
Did we achieve the silver level?
Oh, back then, we did, but now, what they did, under Mark's direction, we've been actually doing things. We've, we've been doing the P O C D work, so you can either do the work, or do the documentation. But the town qualifies for silver, it just would take a full-time person.
It does.
To, to do the, and it's, it's ridiculous, it's utterly ridiculous. And I, we can't be the only town who said this, I mean, I, I wonder why these committees.
I don't know how we did it before, maybe, yeah.
Oh, Rich said it was a lot of work, I remember, remember he went through.
Oh, yeah, he was chasing down people and everything.
That's true.
And so, what we've been doing is a lot of work.
I don't think he was the only one.
Working on sustainability.
Right.
So, we've got this newsletter that goes out to all of the school on, on food waste, we've got programs to reduce food waste, to educate people about composting, on green energy, on energy-efficient solutions, a number of different initiatives going on. It just, so we're in process, but we're not going to kill ourselves to, we're not going to stop people from actually doing things that need to be done to do the paperwork instead.
Let me, let me just roll through the ones that people are working on.
Yeah.
Maybe that's helpful, page one, the Conservation Commission has, has acquired a, a nice handout booklet that we hand out with, with any development application that talks about invasive control, by and large. And that, that becomes an issue anytime you, a homeowner is in front of the Conservation Commission, in the Wetlands Commission, they talk a little, a little, they're always talking about, how are you handling invasives, and so that's a, that, that, that's, say it's partially ongoing, because I do think we're, we want to also address it in our, in our, in our regulatory documents, in our, we don't have a landscaping ordinance, but in, in the, in the zoning context, you know, over the next couple of years.
I was over at Onion Mountain Park, and there's a bunch of the burning bush.
Yeah, garlic mustard and all that.
Clipped.
Yeah.
Just sitting on the ground now.
I think there was a bunch of volunteers that had like a day there, maybe a month ago, and they were pulling all that up, I don't know why they would have left it, but.
I was in Wagner Woods this afternoon, and I saw black, black garbage bags, and they had signs posted saying, this is invasive species that are baking in the sun.
Bake them, bake them dry.
It's not garbage. It was impressive, they had signs on the trail.
Put them in plastic, and you bake them, and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you can't use pesticides or herbicides out there, because they'll kill too much.
Yeah, they had a couple of signs on the trail.
Simsbury Land Trust really works hard on that.
Top of page three is, it speaks to the Greenway program and the trail connections. That is partial and ongoing, what we should see next year is we should see the beginning construction of the trail connection from Hot Meadow to Curtis Park along Tariffill Road. So, that is in design as we speak.
So, George, on page one, where it says partially ongoing is zero percent, do we keep the percentage?
I, I didn't, you know, I, I didn't actually touch the percentage.
Okay, all right.
Because I can do that.
No, I just can't.
I actually just didn't touch them as I was updating this.
George, on the trail connection, I thought there was an item in that discussion we just had about a bridge, is that the bridge that they're talking about putting this trail on that we're going to be redoing? Is it a different bridge?
No, the, the, the big bridge associated with the, the route around Tariffill, it's going to use the old train abutments and those kinds of things, that is, that is not what is referenced in the, in the budget item, I'm fairly certain of it.
Okay.
Because I think that bridge is going to be. On the page, page four, the dark sky principles or lighting standards, the Conservation Commission is working on a draft as we speak as well, and I think that should probably be forwarded to the zoning commission and to this body as well, through your recommendation, probably in April.
Okay.
So, they've, they've done a lot of work on that, Brittany's has done a lot of work on that with, working with, with Joe, and Marjorie, and the folks in, in, on the Conservation Commission, so.
What is their plan with that, George, are they going to put out mandates about that, or is it going to be sort of recommendation?
No, so the, so it'll be, so, so the recommendation is going to be a revision to the zoning regulations that require fixtures, maximums, photometrics, those, those kinds of things, today, it's essentially negotiated as part of any, any development project, but this will require some minimum standards for, we get people to do full cutoff and downward lid and no glare, I mean, people, most developers are doing that anyway as part of the revision, but this will just require it.
Here's a few of existing buildings where people put up new fixtures that are pointing directly at the road, and are dangerous.
Sure, so, you know, those are hard, this is going to mostly apply to, you know, in new construction, but where we have the opportunity to review those, and if there are standards that are, if somebody switches something out, and all of a sudden, there's a new impact, the new regulation would apply to that, for sure.
Yeah, I've always found it to be a little ironic, the current zoning regulations, you know, prohibit backlit signs and halo signs, and that leaves you with illuminating a sign with a spotlight.
Yes, it does.
And now, you drive down the street, and you get the light right in your eye, especially with these new high-intensity LED lights. You know, I don't know about everybody else, but it really catches my eye, and it doesn't throw that much light, in my opinion. It might be, it might be intense, but, man, it doesn't seem to light stuff up as much.
I agree with that point.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just jumping to page six, I think this is under Economic Development, I think. So, this is, this is seek to make state-owned land in Simsbury available for local development purposes. That's, that, that is specifically talking about Iron Horse Boulevard and the DOT ground that is down there.
Parking lot.
The parking lot, and really, it's a series, it's almost four parcels as you go down. The town has re-entered discussions with our friends at DOT on that, and we'll see where that goes.
I thought that zoning commission was looking at form-based code, no?
So, this was, this, this is a recommendation to revisit the form-based code for Simsbury Center to see if any changes are warranted. We expect that that will be done in, so if you remember, we asked for fifty thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars in FY twenty-five, and we were asking for another fifty thousand in FY twenty-six to update town zoning regulations, so that might be part of that process.
Okay.
We haven't really figured out how we're going to do that, whether we would have a, you know, a, you know, an ad hoc committee that includes members of other land use boards, haven't really talked our way through that, but that's, that would be part of that. Investigate ways to, to provide incentives for development of Simsbury Center. The Economic Development Commission is actually reviewing the town's full abatement and tax policies for, to, for economic development. There may be news on that coming, but that is under review now.
I mean, what sort of encouragement do we need, I mean, there's developers left and right trying to put stuff up, it's just navigating our rules, not so much demand problem, it seems, I don't know why we'd be giving away tax abatements, it just seems unnecessary.
Well, it might not necessarily be tax abatements, it could be other.
So, I, you know, I, I'm going to have to respond to that, I, I almost would say.
I mean, flexibility in zoning, I can understand.
So, there hasn't been a new, new construction in Simsbury Center in a decade, and we did, you know, not, not really, you want to count the firehouse?
I don't know.
You know, we did, we, we, we did the charrette in two thousand and eight, and not one new thing has been constructed, that's kind of the point.
There is a development, the housing development off of Pet Road.
Off of which road?
Pet Road, it goes by the, it's down by the post office, that, that big parcel of land is being developed here?
Oh, yeah, that, that, that's, that just started, yeah, right, right, that's a good, good point, you're right, right, that's.
Well, I mean, we, I remember eight years ago of being presented with that for the first time.
Anyway, I'm not driving this, the economic development folks are, and that's what they're looking at.
I was on a task force before being on the, on the Planning Committee, Commission, that was. Um that was my first foray into volunteering in Simsberry, um and it was an economic development task force. And uh we convened for uh two and a half years, um and so there is some evidence that if you want to attract businesses that will bring jobs. You know, we, there's no shortage of retailers that are looking, but uh if you want people who are going to do more than that. Maybe have a team of lawyers or software development or something like that, that uh they go to towns that woo them, give them a little.
And 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 maybe it's maybe it becomes targeted just for, you know, affordable housing or housing in 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 Simsberry Center, which we've talked about.
Yeah.
A place to to find infill. I'll keep you updated on on where that goes.
It just struck me as odd, but yeah, I mean, that's a fair point.
Page nine uh is still under economic development, though there was one review of the advantages and disadvantages of using three economic development organizations. The Economic Development Commission has has made some inroads with working with both Main Street and the Chamber. And themselves together, so I think there's communication going on there.
There is.
Maybe there hasn't been communication in the past, now that I think there is a little bit better communication, so that's why I called that in progress.
Yep.
But uh signed regulations will be part of the zoning or zoning regulation rewrite, although staff is doing a bunch of work now to to get ourselves organized for that. Cause it's it it always is the most challenging part of any zoning regulation rewrite, or can be. So page ten are is is uh really been one of the most active areas, these are the implementation of. Some housing-related items that were are in the P O C D, so um the Board of Selectmen established an advisory Affordable Housing Committee. The zoning commission has now adopted zoning regulations to require affordable units as part of any residential development. Although um it's rev- they ended up approving kind of a revised or a consensus. Consensus-driven. Amount, so it went from um requirement is now going to be ten percent of the units of any develop of any residential development over over ten units. And that they have to be provided at eighty percent of A M I, so there was a time when it was half eighty and half sixty. It's a time during this process where it was uh as much as fifteen percent, and certainly heard from lots of folks in the developing community about how difficult it was. The zoning commission paid attention to to some of that, so so we do have a requirement.
Isn't the threshold ten percent for eight thirty G, George, overall?
So so.
I mean, minus.
So the state uses a ten percent number as a as a goal.
Right.
And as also as a as a um as a benchmark such that you're not subject to.
Right.
You know, a a mandatory eight thirty G application.
Okay.
If you have if you have more than ten percent.
Right.
I always I I always downplay it, because I don't I I don't think it's a realistic goal in a town like Simsberry, it's not. For us to get to ten percent, we would um we would need to add o- o- on their own five hundred affordable units on their own. And if we are requiring affordable, or affordable units don't often come by themselves, they come with a market rate number, so you'd have to approve. A great many residential units in order to get to that number, if you ever could get to that number.
Or except Noah's, I mean, honestly.
Well, Holly, that doesn't work unless those properties are are deed restricted.
Well, that's what I mean, that is, I I don't agree with that restriction, I I just don't think it it accurately reflects what's available in town.
There are, you know what's available in town? There's nothing available in town, there's like nine houses for sale in the town today.
Okay, but when houses come on the market, we do have more affordable.
Come on the market, then they're not affordable, our our biggest problem is, is that.
But that's a very new thing.
That may very be true, that we've got these things that exist, but you know what, almost ninety percent of them, I bet you are. Undermatched, meaning some, we own those houses when we could qualify and buy more expensive houses. But we occupy those houses that would otherwise be more affordable to others, that's what happens, that's what happens when you live in a community for a long time, you get your equity in there.
Yeah.
Well, that's what's happening in the current market conditions, when we wrote the affordability plan, twenty-six percent of the houses that were sold that year. By a price standpoint would have qualified as affordable, it was because they weren't deed restrictions that we're a town with all this NIMBY problems. But we do have quite a bit of stock at the price level of affordability of affordable. Right now, all of Connecticut is a has an inventory issue, I mean, it's.
George, was there something that the zoning commission or some other uh town department. Submitted to the state to try to.
Just for a waiver, right, for eight thirty G?
Yeah, the town submitted a.
So an improvement waiver, right?
Well, no, the town, no, the town submitted um a, we submitted for a certificate of affordable housing. Relief, which which allows you to submit um for essentially a a an affordable housing moratorium. Meaning you wouldn't be subject to eight thirty G for for a period of four years. And what you do is you 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 submit to them all of the information you have on. Previously approved affordable projects.
Right.
Post nineteen ninety-one, which we did.
That may or may not have come to fruition.
No, that 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 have been constructed, yeah, that have been constructed, so we are we are um we're working, we we got some feedback from them. We're working on putting together some supplemental information, we'll see how that goes. Uh so yeah, so on the housing stuff, the uh zoning commission approved the a- a- affordable percentage. They approved the new uh a new R eight zone. And they rewrote portions of what was the workforce housing, the flexible overlay, to um called a housing strategies overlay. So uh it it removed the twenty percent requirement, it was a twenty twenty percent affordable requirement in that. In that standalone zone, now it's back to ten percent for every every application.
And removed the restriction for being in the proximity of Hop House Street?
Did, it did remove that.
So now that floating zone could theoretically be placed any uh anywhere where it would qualify.
Yeah, yes, yes.
It's still gotta be within like uh utilities, it's gotta be available.
Hey, you gotta have water, sewer utilities, and you gotta, it still has to meet, it still has to be consistent with the P O C D. That's one of the things that folks got hung up on a little bit during the zoning commission process, we're like, well, you can put this on West ledge, or you could drop this on. And I had to walk kind of walk through, not really, I mean, our our P O C D says that those areas are planned for low-density residential development. So if somebody had an application for higher density in R eight zone on West ledge in the western part of the town. Town staff would say, it doesn't meet your P O C D, hopefully the planning commission would make a recommendation that says it's not consistent with our P O C D. So, I mean, we do, we we should rely on our maps and our plans, and you have to have confidence that that's gonna work as part of the process. So we'll we'll see, so uh so those, so that was, those are those are those are those are good items. And they did remove the all the back, all the barriers for accessory dwelling units, those are now by right.
Does that.
Attached and detached.
Does that take the next one off the table, though, George, with the deed restricting affordable units, because they pulled that out of the um. The housing uh workbook or whatever.
What page you on?
Uh page ten, no, uh second to the front. Says uh the men's subdivision regulations require a percentage of new developments.
Yeah, you don't, we don't need to, if it's in the zoning ordinance, it doesn't need to be in the in the subdivision regs. Subdivision regs are implementing the underlying requirements of the of the zone. Uh it's ten, we did that, eleven. So yeah, I mean, the the you know, the 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 board and others are 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 considering uh opportunities where where the town owns land. And one of those spaces, although it hasn't gotten very far, but there has been some discussion about the twenty-four acres at Meadowwood, which is. You know, folks talked about um ballfields and stuff there, but it can be used, it is unencumbered by. It's 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 just unencumbered, it it the town can do anything it wants there, the rest of that property at Meadowwood is is tied up. State deed uh state deed restrictions and commitments to farming and and passive recreation, those kinds of things, but that twenty-four acres is usable, so.
Raise a lot of eyebrows.
It would.
It's a little way from the coyotes first.
Quite a robust conversation about that. Considerselfing zoning districts or specific locations. Yeah, I think that's kind of complete with the other ones that were were done, really, um same thing with uh the the overlay zone, which we really.
Good for zoning.
Yeah, good for them, they were, you know, um chairman was 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 committed to it and.
Yeah.
He kind of shepherded it through and got the votes and good process. So Holly Holly did the sustainability stuff. And then um even page thirteen really is kind of the last of it, that's stuff related to community facilities, again, there's been. There there always seems, you know, I've only been here three years now, um there's ongoing construction, uh construction, ongoing discussion about. What and where and how to provide for a new community center or a senior center, wi- without result, obviously.
Wasn't that what they talked about using Eno Hall for, I mean, isn't that why we're spending a million dollars on doors?
It is, that, I mean, that that needs to be done anyway, but there has had always been talk of a separate and and standalone facility. We still talk about that, um obviously, the renovations at Eno are underway, there's no renovations at the town office building right now. And then um there has been discussion, as as you saw with that little parcel on at Owens Brook and Firetown. For selling small town-owned parcels, but uh Board of Selectmen has not scheduled to vote on that, so I'm not sure how many more times we'll. We'll do that process. That's about it, that's all, I I I'll just stop there, you know, it's a lot has 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 occurred. And I think that's that's a good thing, now, wh- what I'll probably do as staff is I'll probably, you know, for the zoning commission, check back in with them and say, well. Now what we wanna do, I suspect that they're, you know, just a couple of months away from we be funded on on doing the full zoning ordinance rewrite, and that will, that is all they will do. You know, F Y, you know, end of twenty-five and and twenty-six, that that's, you know, outside of their regular workload of applications and stuff, so. Anyway, there's your report, so I think that's.
When was the last time the zoning regulations were updated? When was it that long?
You mean in.
They're continuously.
So in total. They spent about forty-five thousand dollars in twenty eighteen. To update the zoning regulations. And it's my my opinion as your your planning directors that it made the zoning regulations infinitely worse than they were before. The work was done. They're riddled with errors, they are riddled with misspellings, font issues. Just like paragraphs that stop and to stop, so. It um but it all, what it also did bill is even though it was rewritten, it was mostly just reformatted. It was mostly reformatted, because I've gone back, it's like, what is this, where did this section come from, you know, back to two thousand and five or two thousand and two. And it really just has carried these old regulations forward. The way I the way I think we should shepherd it is, I think I think we need to rewrite the entire zoning regulations. I don't know that we need to change the way we approach development necessarily, there's just a lot of holes, like I wouldn't say, oh, we need to have new setbacks for the R four. No, carry all that, that stuff all works, no reason.
And looking at the the last, you know, the cover page of Simsberry zoning regulations, effective date five twenty-one twenty-two-three. That was a formatting.
So so we we update, we every time there is a text amendment, we update the we update the date.
That's what I thought, it was continuous.
We adopt a um, you know, A D U's or if we adopt.
Okay.
A a a new whatever, change, a new use in the industrial zone or something like that, so yeah, we, that is. I I can't, I can't identify a comprehensive.
Okay, alright, then maybe I just remember this being on the agenda for a long time then, or a a wishlist.
Yeah, it it that may be, that may be.
I think there was discussion, I think you're right, but yeah, I remember back to Janie.
Right.
Right?
I seem to remember.
Yeah, they so the so the I I there have been, there have been several initiatives where they did some bulk changes.
Yeah.
But not not an entire.
Yeah.
Yeah, and wholesale rewrite, again, I lots of issues with. Okay.
Yep.
So planning department.
Yeah, so, you know, I I have been showing this um. This economic development update in the last two months, and so I figured I would show it to you too. Cause you might like it, it's quick, it just, it's really, it's pretty quick. Here, I'm just gonna, I I did a, I did a presentation to the men's club. Retired men's club, and I, so I'm not gonna wear you out with, you know, my my bona fides.
I know.
Here we go. A lot of this stuff you know about, um so it's just kind of a kind of broken into active projects, projects under construction and then. Projects that have been approved but not not constructed, so, you know, we we, over the last year, we've had about two hundred thousand square square feet of commercial. Under construction and two hundred and twenty-three rental units under construction, and I'll I'll go through each of those projects, so. Our friends at Ennis and Bickford are are finishing up a forty-one thousand square foot plus three. Uh they're in essentially a an equipment shed on the rear part of the the rear part of that property. But they are gonna occupy it with equipment and new hires and personnel, so there is some expansion going on. On that, that's that's a property that they owned, and then it was the Pure Leaf property, and then they bought it back, which is kind of interesting. If you haven't been, um you know, fastest growing, the single fastest growing fast food establishment in the country. Landed here in Simsberry.
And that is in Simsberry.
With that that site, or the or Raising Canes?
Raising Canes is the fastest growing.
Like.
Fast food.
Chain.
Chain in the country, yes.
What's Simsberry site doing?
It is on the edge of town.
I'll tell you what it was, is it was not nearly as.
Oh, yeah.
As as a traffic problem as we thought it might be.
Yeah, there have been.
Yeah, in Enfield, it was a mess.
It was a disaster in Enfield.
Like six, six.
Yeah, now, we worked pretty closely with them there, the way we had them routed, you know, we used the entire Simsberry Commons essentially to route. Those first couple of days and it worked, and they were, they 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 worked with us, they worked with Town of Avon Police and and our police department to to kind of get that, so it worked.
So is Route forty-four in Avon or Simsberry?
Well, that's.
In front of Raising Canes, that's right on the, and that's right on forty-four.
So Raising Canes is in our town, so the the line kind of goes through.
The mobile.
Applebee's and the mobile.
Goes through the mobile, it it I think, I think Staples is in west Simsberry.
Oh, really?
But the the Webster Bay.
And the Car Wash are in Simsberry.
Yeah.
Across the street, yeah, the Car Wash is in Simsberry too.
I did not realize that.
Yeah, and then I think there's a, is there a Mexican restaurant there as well?
Yeah.
That I believe is in.
Avon.
Avon.
That's Avon.
That is a crock, that's right, that's.
That's Avon.
That's one up.
Yeah.
Yeah, further south.
Best Buy.
So the line actually goes, so that the line goes through the the parking lot of.
Yeah, because Webster is Avon.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, this history is so weird.
It's funky, that's.
Yeah, literally the edge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Credit for them.
Movie theater is actually in Avon.
No, 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 Simsberry.
That's Simsberry.
That's Simsberry, all that's up that way is Simsberry, yeah.
I thought online when you look it up, it says Avon.
No, that's.
Uh this. We've got two childcare facilities going up, this one at thirty Hot Meadows in front of Aspen Green.
It's Nest.
This is the Nest.
Yeah, I just saw the sign today.
This is the Nest, or um the the building's almost done, the site.
That's your feedback from the design review board, uh this these elevations show contrasting color windows and doors. It hasn't, it hasn't come to fruition yet on the building, you think they're gonna paint that?
There was some, there were there were blue elements, shutters and doors, if I remember right.
It's all white right now.
I did drive, I drove past it today, I was like, it looked all white.
It did look white.
It is like.
Yeah, so, so I I could, uh yeah, let's check that. So Chris Nelson is is under construction, three buildings under construction.
Barbara Cove, gonna commit.
It is now called, it is now called Luminary.
Okay, so I should forget.
I'm just telling you that's what it's called. It's called Luminary.
Luminary.
Okay.
What was wrong with Barbara Cove?
I don't know. It's all marketing. That is a hundred and seventy-five units. The first three buildings are under construction.
How many buildings total?
There are uh, five, five plus a community center, if I remember right, something like that. One, two, three.
Boy, you know, depending where you are in the summer, you sit outside on your deck.
Hundred and seventy-five, yeah.
And is that, uh, is that an age restricted?
It is not. It is nothing.
It's got no.
Mark rate.
Why are you looking, Don?
Well, remember how everyone on the planning and. We were, we all wanted to move right in. I still do, but it doesn't look as nice as it did back then.
Proposals work at the beginning, right? They wanna get your attention. I thought that's.
And that's what it ends up looking like. That's Barbara Cove.
Of course, when you add residential units, it becomes a additional demand for storage facilities and there's.
Phase one complete. How many, uh, they're building more than one?
It's like half and half. It's it's two pieces, yeah, you just finish one half. There is some retail conversion at uh, at Simsbury Commons that, you know, I don't know if anybody's been to the indoor pickleball facility. I have not checked in to see how they're doing, but they're, they are open.
They're doing really well.
They're doing, I have a friend who goes regularly. They answered their back.
They're killing it, yeah.
That's what I heard.
I poked in last week and that place is top notch.
Yeah, that's, that's what I understand.
It's not, you know, this was purpose built. It's not a conversion. It's not basketball courts with tape on them.
No, they they have, they have the real court and the real, yeah.
That was the building that was the go-kart thing, right? Before?
No, 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 this was. Or Home Goods, Home Goods.
Yeah, it was Home Goods, yeah.
And a bookstore before that.
The go-kart place was where Bob's was in the corner.
And that.
Oh, is that gone already?
Yes. And the trampoline parks is, has been under construction for some time. I need to probably check back in with them. They, it's been.
So George, before you leave this slide, I think it's appropriate for me to ask a question. I I see on the zoning commission agenda.
Yep.
Uh, preliminary talks for redevelopment of Simsbury Commons.
Yes.
So.
So there is a, so the developer, a developer, the developer asked to come to the zoning commission for an informal conversation about. Uh, the introduction of upwards of three hundred residential units on a portion. Of redeveloped Simsbury Commons. Uh, I understand that the look, I I think the location, you know, I I can show you if you wanna see it.
Yes, please. If it's public knowledge.
It is, it's absolutely public.
In that restaurant, Bertucci's, is somebody taking that eventually?
Yeah, Maximia.
Maximia.
Oh, really? They're gonna go in.
Where Bertucci's is, but that's Avon.
Yeah.
Yes, it is Avon.
I just like Bertucci's a lot. I just.
I like their rolls.
Only the good die young.
Sorry, Gary. I'm not trying to hurt you.
Right there.
I missed.
I'm sorry, sorry.
It was always very loud.
Yes, I agree.
Although it's. There's still one in Connecticut.
It's so hard for restaurants to make it in Avon for some reason.
Well, they went down across the board.
But they told us at Maximia they were gonna build like an outdoor space, like going toward Burger-Five, so they'd have.
It's on page five, George.
Yeah, I got it.
So, but that's still, that's still Avon, yeah.
So, so if you're staring at this, to to your left, the left box is, uh, what is it called? Is it ShopRite? I don't. What's it called?
Stop and Shop.
Stop and Shop, ShopRite. That gave me myself there a little bit.
No, the ShopRite.
How is it still ShopRite in Canton?
Something in Canton.
Not that many ShopRite. Say wall bombs or.
Actually Staples, Staples used to be an A and P, right? Remember?
A and P, yeah. Okay, so supermarket is there on your left, so if, as you transition, they would, they would um. They would demo that stretch of retail. That is essentially between the movie the, the movie theaters and what is uh.
Gonna be the fun.
No, the, no, the Dill Dinkers, it's the, that's, that corner is Dill Dinkers, right? The the pickleball place.
No, it's below.
It's further down.
Below.
It's below the.
Well, I'm too far, I'm too far in. This is inside, this is inside the horseshoe essentially.
Right.
Party store, the.
GNC.
Well, Luna's still there.
Luna's is still there.
And the nail place.
So they're gonna demo that?
Isn't the nail place?
They're gonna kick all this business out?
I understand that they would uh.
It's all Chili's.
Go up in the areas.
So Chili's would be gone, huh?
Chili's is to the far right, I guess.
Chili's is above the, it's, well.
Yeah, Chili's is.
Existing vacant building. Chili's is above existing.
Chili's is right in the corner.
That's the two banks.
Yep.
These are, these are the banks.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Yeah, anyway, so so that, so it would be a redevelopment. I mean, I, I, as I said, that.
It's gonna be the trampoline.
Other trampoline.
That's.
I'm sure that they're gonna, you know, tell the zoning commission and they'll be before you too, cause they'll have to go to a. Probably a planned area development, so it would, it would come to this body for for review and comment. But retail's impossible. Retail's very difficult, so what do you do? That's, that's what they'll tell you, I'm sure.
I wonder how long the movie theater.
Retail's struggling now.
But that would, that would mean they'd have to get rid of Chili's.
I'm not.
I, I, I don't know the details.
Well, think about it. They converted Home Goods to Pickleball Courts, Bob's to Trampolines.
Economic development, we might have to have.
It's not retail, it's recreation.
Yeah, that's, those big boxes are.
And I wonder how long the movie theater can survive.
And I suspect that adding residential uses might make. You know, you know, new restaurants and those kinds of things a little bit more successful.
George, get a load of this. Um, did you guys see the little link I sent you for a meeting last, last Thursday? Sorry it was so late. I didn't realize it was, it was open, you know, to everybody, but the the fellow who uh. Gave the presentation, works for uh.
Gorman and York.
Gorman and York.
Yep. Did Don Poland give the presentation? Yeah, he, he's about. The most well-regarded data guy in the region.
Well, his data looked good, except it was dated. He had stuff from twenty twelve, you know, and so, anyway. But he said it used to be retail drew residential. And now he says it's flipped. Residential is driving retail.
Right.
So a lot of the, a lot of the, you know, rules of thumb that the developers used to go by is that everything's. You know, getting rewritten.
Right. Interesting. Yeah, those retail markets.
And he also, very interesting, I'll forward you the presentation, okay, cause I, I believe they made that uh.
I think it's recorded.
It might even be recorded. I don't know if I have access. It's probably on the Regional Planning Commission website. But he had this um, age, what he called a pyramid chart. And historically in the United States, it, you know, older people up here and younger people down at the bottom, and it was more. Bottom weighted.
Yes, totally.
Now it's like this.
Exactly.
At least for our area, you know, in Connecticut and and har, e- even show like the Hartford metropolitan area. You know, this thing's inverted and he says, nobody's looking for, you know, four bedroom, I shouldn't say nobody. Not as many people are looking for four bedroom houses having five kids, like, you know, it was in the seventies and the eighties.
Because they cannot afford it to run at prices.
Right, so now you have, you have these people that are choosing not to have children. You have.
We are getting older.
Yeah, we're getting older.
We are marrying later. I mean, this is the speech, right? We are getting older, we are marrying later.
Yep.
If we have children, we're having them much later.
And fewer.
And fewer.
And we are having fewer children. And that, that absolutely changes the housing market.
Yep.
Yeah.
It really does.
And what Don said was that's driving the market demand for uh apartments. As opposed to single family.
Household sizes are.
Shrinking.
Significantly smaller than.
You know, it's funny, you know, Don, this guy who gave the presentation works for Gorman and York. They used to be a developer. But he kind of explained it like they're a go-between now. But anyway, I still think they develop.
They do, I mean, I, they do most, I know them as as, you know, kind of data review. I mean. They do economic development studies.
Yeah.
They do fiscal impact studies.
Okay.
They do echo, you know.
So that tracks with what he was saying.
Yeah.
And and he said, my pitch to you tonight is gonna be, what are the market forces that should be listened to versus. Townspeople's wants. You know, he said, not, he, to me, it looked like he was talking from the developer's standpoint, okay? And maybe that's who he was paid by to produce this presentation, but he said, he gave an example. And of course, it's the extreme. He said, there was a town in northwestern Connecticut, didn't name it, but he said it very aptly. Okay? They wanted to put in their P O C D or, yeah, I think P O C D, they wanted to have a Nordstrom brought to town.
Oh, yeah, I heard that.
You heard this?
It was a different presentation, but same story. Yeah, it was uh.
And and he said that it was a town of twelve hundred people.
Yeah, it was like somewhere out near Lime Rock. I forget the name of the town.
Sharon or.
Yeah, one of those. And there was no way I could support it. It was just.
You know, the market would not support it, even though the people wanted it.
Right.
So, you know, it's a balance. It's always, always a balance.
Well, Connecticut's the fifth largest state in the country, and when you look at a map of Connecticut. Um, every town is getting older, every town from like ten years ago. It's, it's um. It, and it's, it went from light blues to dark blues. I mean, it's, it's, you know, so.
This is the same with Simsbury?
What was that?
This is the same with.
Yes.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, and so the impact, the impact that.
You need to have more kids, Angel.
No, I mean, I'm actually seeing the kids and the number of, I mean, involved in sports and there's like a lack of uh. Space pretty much for these kids to exercise in town, so I was under the impression that all these young families are moving in with all these kids. We have to make like two or three teams at a certain grade to meet the demand of like playing sports and things, so.
So Connecticut, Simsbury.
What I see is actually the opposite, so really, I mean, I also see, you know, people with a certain age, you know, going out for a walk, you know. At a certain time of the day, but I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you know, it's like.
There's your dad on kids. I mean, just your enrollment. We have less enrollment than we did in two thousand and twelve. That is something that people.
Yeah.
Do not hear.
Yeah.
When we, when we deal with development projects.
Economics of the, the population aging, what that means, yeah, it's like you said, well, it changes, retail, it changes, you know.
Well, it's aging in smaller households where, you know, more people are having fewer kids or no kids.
And uh, anyway, let me just finish up here, guys.
What other, what other updates do you have in this space?
So this will probably, this will cycle off, but um, obviously this opened in Sep- uh, in September at the Wokel New Dorm. In their little dorm row there, if you think about it, on the campus there, it's, it was neat. Uh, Vessel is under construction.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Sure is, sure is.
They're excavating there now.
Yeah, they're putting the.
Foundation.
Foundation, foundation only right now, but yeah.
It's yours.
Yeah, from the road, it's such a small lot.
It is. Um, got uh, the Goddard School going in at, this, one, one and two Coopers in front of. The Silverman. Stuff at um.
They're using the, the smaller building too?
Yeah, there's a, um, somebody in there, a little spa in there for about twelve hundred square feet.
Where's that?
Somebody's in that.
It's the Hartford South or.
Yeah, Hartford's, uh, Hartford North, Hartford North.
Well.
So, rigid Talke down there, where the apartments are, so this is, these are two buildings in front. So the um, Goddard's taken about twelve thousand square feet of the sixteen, of their, it's two-story, eight and eight. They've taken about ten or twelve thousand.
That's the newer building.
That's the one on the left if you're staring at.
Right.
Yes, the newer building.
The one on the bottom across the street.
The older one on the right side.
That they haven't been able to reach out.
Yes, correct. So there's spa in for twelve hundred square feet at the small building and again, the Goddard, Goddard School, I think is gonna end up taking the whole.
Difference in the architecture between this.
What's the retail go?
And. The one we just looked at. The other school, that Long Ranch style, or Vessel.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, that's nice.
Here, here's where, you know, developer kind of complied with the request to have a New England style with gables and whatnot.
I don't like to shove it down the throat.
I like that, that building. That's pretty good.
Yeah.
So international skating center.
Vessel one, George?
No, um. I, I, I like it more than other folks like it.
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna be very candid with you. I think I told you this last meeting. My wife and I were driving on Route ten in Cheshire, I think.
Yeah.
And Vessel has.
That one's up there, right? That's up.
And we drove by and we're like, oh, look at that new office building.
Yeah.
Until we saw the sign, Vessel Apartments coming soon.
Interesting.
But it was a nice office building.
Imagine that.
Maybe to contemporary flower town.
Is it right off uh, two, um, six ninety-one? Oh, Route ten.
Oh, it's right by the road.
So the uh, the ISCC is expanding. That is under, the deal is up and the foundation is in over there for. Twenty-three thousand square foot uh, expansion to smaller rinks, you know, designed for kind of more, more, more juniors and.
Yeah.
And entry, entry, entry level.
No, this is, this is a good project.
Yeah, I think so.
I heard also they gave deposit for that uh, farmland. Oh, the section north of there, yeah. Just gonna ask, is there any progress on that? Yes, no?
Oh, boy. That's what I understand, that they, that they're.
No, I heard it from one of the coaches at the ISCC.
So I understand. Uh, no, no, there's, I think there's, there's, they went through a rezoning process recently and that. Uh, I believe they're in design on a, on a retail.
Yeah. Big village thing.
Yeah.
Let's see about that. But they are, they are, they are under design on one, on the first building.
Yeah.
This stuff that we've got approved again that hasn't, that's in what I call a pipeline, you know, kind of stuff we've seen before, but waiting on what's going on. Of course, our, our friends at the Wagner Ford property. For the Chipotle and the Starbucks and the ten thousand square foot in line.
They still not have a tenant for that one yet? The, the big building in the back?
No, I, I, they don't, and I think it'll end up being multiple tenants and it'll be last. They'll do that last, but there is um. So that's probably gonna be delayed a little bit longer. They have, they have joined, the town has joined them. Asking for a, almost a million dollar. Brownfield Reclamation Grant from State EDC. Towns, there's, there's no out of pocket for the town. Town just has to sign it, but yeah, there's, they always had a remediation requirement out there because of. Old, the old wagon board, whatever was on there, so they, that money came up and that deadline came up and they're like, we're gonna apply for that. I mean, obviously, why wouldn't you if you can get a little piece of?
So another interesting thing that Don from Gorman, Gorman and York said was Americans are now fixated with drive-throughs. Pretty, pretty understanding, right? But to the point where Starbucks, they're gonna be shutting down their, their locations that don't have drive-throughs. Or renovating them to have drive-throughs. That, that's Starbucks, right?
Yes, sir.
Where the drive-through.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Starbucks will not, he says Starbucks will not build a new place without a drive-through now.
The Chipotle is a special Chipotle that requires using the app to order from the drive-through. I mean, you can't just drive through if you haven't ordered. That's what I understand is that-
So you have to order ahead of time?
Well, it takes time for some of that stuff to be prepared.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I guess. So, so we'll see how that goes. But that's-
I didn't realize there were gonna be separate buildings. I thought it was gonna be a strip.
Yep.
What's that thing in the back?
So there's ten thousand square feet of, of tenant space?
The building that hasn't been rented yet.
It's a, it's a tenant building that, that, I think the, uh-
Rendering looks a lot nicer than what's there now.
Yeah, well, yeah.
That was gravel.
Really like those piles of dirt.
Site's not great. Um, you know, Doris Crossing, you remember there's, there's, there's seventy-two units up front and seventy-two units in the back. For some reason, I circled the, the front when actually we've had some folks, um, who have purchased the back recently, and so will probably be moving forward on that, uh, what was called Castor Bridge Crossing at the time. Uh, which is two separate buildings of thirty, thirty-six and thirty-six, I think, if I remember right.
What does pipeline units mean?
So, I, I, I use, I use the word pipeline to mean approved, entitlement's all approved, but not constructed.
They're in the pipeline.
So they, they're in our pipeline to be constructed.
So, George, where is the new construction happening? It's where the circle is or not?
So now, it, so there's two things. So the circle's there because, uh, last year, Doris Crossing came in and, and exchanged some commercial for some, from seventy-two units up here. But this is the, this is, this is going to likely be under construction before anything else.
Okay.
There's a piece in the back.
Right, that's to the left on the actual aerial.
It's here. Exactly right. Exactly. Um, no, it's a little here. Yeah, the cul-de-sac is there, so it's exactly right. That's right, yep.
And then the Olympic Village will be down below it.
That's right.
That's right.
Down here. The Olympic Village.
That's what the guy called it.
That's what he did call it.
I know, and he continues to call it that. And, you know, we're gonna be very supportive.
Or actually, he says Olympic style.
It's a cool idea.
Oh, it really is, and I think that would be, boy, if we could, if we could pull that off.
If you could do, exactly.
It'd be amazing. And then just, uh, you know, just, just some small businesses that have opened in the past half a year, year.
Do we have any data on what the residents are using to heat their places with? Is it like oil majority?
Say that again, in, in Simsbury?
Simsbury, yes. Because I've seen, I mean, you can get-
Some oil, propane, and there's some gas too.
Gas is like on main roads, but, uh, in my neighborhood, for example, they just did it halfway and they just cut it off and, uh, is there any incentive? I mean, natural gas, I guess it's a cleaner fuel than the oil and you don't have to get all these trucks coming out.
Yeah, but the greenies don't want any more expansion of natural gas, and they fight it. They think it's, uh, you know, fossil fuels getting burnt into the air.
Well, in comparison with the oil is the same.
Um, I'm, I'm not saying I disagree with you, I'm just saying I've heard a lot of this. I'm on the sustainability committee and they're all against natural gas.
My answer is, I don't, I don't know if I have data that shows where, where that service stuff is.
But there isn't very much here in town. Unfortunately, this is a town that has to truck in the fuel oil.
And I would say because the systems are dated too, so this is gonna start failing and, uh, people have to start looking at, uh, newer ways, you know, to heat the places.
I think there's a fair amount of people use woodstoves too and stuff.
Nope, more than one of those.
The way that they designed all these fireplace has, uh, old woodstove, you know, the chimneys for decorative purposes. So it's not like in the center of the house that they-
Yeah.
So that's all I got. That's, you know, that's what's going on around town, as far as I know.
So, you should know.
Yeah, I know most of it.
George, I think you mentioned it, or somebody mentioned it last time, about the solar field. It's gonna get reverted back to the town at some point soon. Is that it?
I forget the, I forget the lease on that. It's twenty, but then I think there-
What, they're gonna extend it?
I don't know where there's extensions involved, but I don't really, I, I ha- I have access to it. I can go look it up, but that, that agreement, I haven't read that agreement in a while.
We'll, we'll need to put a road in there when, when that time comes.
You know, a lot, a, a lot of these solar farms, uh, some of the early ones that I was familiar with, they published the electricity they were generating in real time.
Yeah.
You know, had like a meter. You go to the website. I haven't been able to find that for Tobacco Valley Solar.
I don't think it, I don't think it stays here anyway, right? They sold it up to-
No, it goes to Rhode Island.
Yeah.
It was earmarked for Rhode, Rhode Island.
Because they're, they're putting one in Granby on the old Monrovia Farms, um, same thing.
Yes.
It's going up this year sometime.
Which one, a crush on the airport?
So I, I-
Uh, well, yeah.
In that area.
Monrovia, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it starts there and then it-
Took down all the, uh, huts and everything.
Yes, yes. Yes, although I think Granby is challenging both the ba- the battery-
Well, they're definitely challenging the battery.
I thought they were challenging the expansion too.
Oh, I didn't think they were challenging the solar field.
You might be right.
I, I definitely saw the battery thing. They, uh, they're challenging the environmental impact and the aquifer issue.
Yep.
Yeah, the aquifer, that was, yeah. All right.
Yeah, I'd just like to know if, uh, you know, Tobacco Valley Solar is making money for the, uh, the developers. And making electricity.
I suspect they are because the expansion, same owner is expanding. Yeah, I think it's the same owner.
Okay.
Interesting, all right.
And that goes through the Connecticut Si- Siting Council?
It does. It does.
Tough to fight them.
Tough to fight them. You can only appeal and it's, uh, cha- quite a challenge.
That's who Granby's arguing with now over their battery thing.
Right, that's, yeah, yeah.
Even the battery.
That one, boy, that, that seems like they have a-
I would think with the aquifer, yeah.
Or, no, they don't have the ability to fight the fires.
It's firefighting. It's fire, it's, I think the strongest argument is firefighting capability.
Yeah.
I don't really, I'm not an expert on that.
Well, then maybe, maybe they'll buy them some new equipment.
Well, but, I mean, they're also putting those all over the state, so if it's a problem in Granby, it's a problem everywhere, I'd assume. I don't know. I mean, if, if we're gonna have so many of these, they've got, someone had to have thought of that, I hope. You know, I mean, if they're putting, I don't know, I think it's like twenty or thirty of these all over the state, those little battery things. I mean, they're all little. They're bigger than this room, but-
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're-
I mean, they're not huge. It's like four or five parking spaces worth, but yeah.
That's it.